Oh, my gosh, that's outside.
After we do consent agenda and your appointment.
The first one.
Yeah. No, I'm gonna do it before. Yeah.
Walked in. Judge.
Mm-hmm.
Very impressive, yes.
All right, we have to find a little respect.
That's it.
Next week. I'll drink some wine and cheese too. Hey, Patrick. Don't know. Folks, we're just waiting for seven o'clock to start. There's no mystery. We're just waiting, just we've got one more minute.
Messes up everybody's DVR as we start, really?
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Durham City Council to order for Monday, March the 5th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. I certainly want to welcome all of you all who are in attendance here today. We're so glad to see you, to see such a wonderful group of young people, especially with us tonight. I would now like to ask you to please pause with me for a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. I'm going to now ask Councilmember Reese to preside at the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are very fortunate to have two great groups of scouts to come up to the front and help us with the pledge tonight. So if Girl Scout Troop 998 would step on up and Cub Scout Troop 424, if you guys would make your ways to the, to the front of the chamber here, and, sorry?
There's more troops.
That's the only, I'm sorry, that's the only girls, that's the only troop number they gave us. All of the Girl Scouts just come on, what, Troop 21 as well? And all the other Girl Scouts I missed, I apologize. Bad work on my part.
Should've seen the looks on their face.
Everyone else did great. I was the failure there, I'm sorry. While they make their way up to the front, I'll ask everyone else, if it's your custom to do so, and if you're so able, please rise and join us for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
Well done. Thank you, Councilmember Reese and company. Let me just say to the scouts and parents and scoutmasters that we're so glad to have you here tonight. We know that you may not want to stay for our entire meeting, and you won't hurt anyone's feelings when you leave, if you, whenever you leave, so just want to let you know that. But we're super glad to have the, both the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts here tonight. It's great. And I want to shout out to my friend Kim Cameron for helping to lead. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Alston.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Reese.
I'm here, but embarrassed. Get over it. Sorry, everybody.
I'm here, too.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Okay, and now we're gonna move to our ceremonial items, and the first proclamation that we have is the Girl Scout Week proclamation, and I'm gonna ask Councilmember Deidreana Freeman if she would do the honors tonight. And there may be, I'm not sure if whom you all have designated to come and receive this. Kim, you and some of the scouts, but y'all come on up and join Councilmember Freeman over here at this microphone.
We're presenting a proclamation for the Girl Scouts and for Girl Scout Week, whereas March 12th marks the 106th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United, of USA, founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scout, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest of ideals of encourage, of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls gain knowledge and develop skills that's, that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. Girls, whereas Girl scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them today in science, technology, engineering, math, in the arts, as well as other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas, Girl Scouts have shaped the lives of 53% of female senior executives and business owners, 60% of women in Congress, and virtually every female astronaut. And whereas, more than 2.7 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 106 years of this American tradition with nearly 50 million women who are former Girl Scouts, including myself, and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. And whereas, in partnership with over 9,000 adult volunteers, Girl Scouts North Carolina Coastal Pines serves nearly 26,000 girl members in 41 central and eastern North Carolina counties, including 2,265 of the adult and girl members in the city of Durham. Now, therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of March 6th through the 12th, 2018, as Girl Scout Week in Durham, and hereby urge all citizens to take special note of this observance and applaud the commitment of Girl scouting has made to support the life and leadership development of girls. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 5th day of March, 2018. And Kim Cameron is going to actually make some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor Shul, Councilmember Freeman, and other city council members, and everyone in the audience. Girl Scouts builds girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. Each year, Girl Scouts North Carolina Coastal Pines serves over 26,000 girls in 41 counties in central and eastern North Carolina. Girl Scouts serve 11% of the Girl Scout population in Durham, over, with over 2,000 total girls in Girl Scouts and over 718 adult volunteers. Girl Scouts are the preeminent leadership development organization for girls. And with programs from coast to coast and across the globe, Girl Scouts offer girls a chance to practice a lifetime of leadership, adventure, and success. Studies have shown that during the first 20 years of life, that a girl experiences, of girl-only experiences, sorry, deeply affect the development of young women's confidence and the trajectory of the rest of their lives. We firmly, excuse me, believe in the power of girl, G-go-getter, I-innovator, R-risk-taker, and L-leader to change the world. Thank you.
Jim? Would you like Councilmember Freeman and the girls to pose here in the front for a photograph or two?
Sure.
Well, how about the councilmembers, other, have any other councilmembers been Girl Scouts?
Yes.
Go for it, Girl Scouts.
I was not a Girl Scout, so I'll just take a picture. Perfectly smart. Very.
It knows quite that protection.
The photobomb for Dan.
No, we're still in it.
Yeah.
There you are.
Thank you. Girls, maybe you'll.
Thank you so much.
Maybe you'll become an astronaut, or maybe you'll become a city council member or mayor of Durham. Thank you.
President.
President.
Wow, awesome. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Now, we're on to our second ceremonial item, which is Women's History Month proclamation. And I'm going to ask Dell Matioli if she would join me, and anyone else that you would like to bring with you. Ms. Matioli? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
We have a proclamation here about women's history, whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the city of Durham and Durham County, North Carolina, and the nation in many ways, and whereas women have persevered in overcoming challenges and fought for what they believe in, and whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in governance, medicine, mental health, social justice, business, and fashion and beauty, and other movements which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas too often, women are unsung and sometimes their contributions go unnoticed, with many history books focusing primarily on political, military, and economic leaders and events. However, the achievements, leadership, courage, strength, and love of the women who helped build America is as vital as that of the men whose names we know so well. And whereas, looking over the past 150 years since Confederation, countless women have harnessed their energy and talents, found their voice, and claimed their place in our country's proud history. And younger generations of women will carry the torch and continue to contribute to Durham County, North Carolina, and this nation. Now, therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, do hereby proclaim the month of March, 2018, as Women's History Month in Durham, and hereby urge all citizens to take special note of this observance, as well as libraries, schools, and community organizations to focus on the leaders who struggled for equality, like Susan B. Anthony, Sojourner Truth, Lucy Stone, and many more, as we raise our awareness about the generations of women who have, who are, and who will shape and influence the history of Durham, North Carolina, and the world. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of North, Durham, North Carolina, this 5th day of March, 2018. And I'm gonna now turn this over to Dell Matioli for some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor Shul.
Sure.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the mayor and city council as well, and all of you for having the history of knowing about women, and I applaud these beautiful girls. I was a Girl Scout, and it is the right thing for you to continue. Okay, Women's History Month is very important, and it started in 1980 when Jimmy Carter put that together. So since then, I have been trying to elevate us because I realize that mostly everything that we're involved with, a woman is somewhere. And to get it done, choose some women, and it gets done. So I am applauding the city of Durham for recognizing how valuable all of us women are, and we definitely support our men. Thank you very much, and have a beautiful, beautiful year.
Thank you, Dell. Thank you. And now for the final ceremonial item of tonight, we have a special recognition, and I'm going to call on my former council colleague, Eddie Davis, to make this presentation. You may know that in my State of the City address, I named Eddie to be our first public historian in Durham, and I'm very excited that as we kick off the, begin, as Eddie says, the parade towards our sesquicentennial, that he has chosen to recognize a very special person in Durham's history for our first recognition. So Councilmember Davis, please come with your special honoree, and you can do the honors.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Shul. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to have the Parade Marshal to be recognized here. I'll read it as we have it here, honoring Jean Bradley Anderson. Whereas the city, the Durham City Council is engaged in a 13-month prelude to the 150th anniversary of the official incorporation of the city of Durham, and whereas the book Durham County, The History of Durham County, North Carolina, by Jean Bradley Anderson, is viewed by scholars as the most definitive and the most comprehensive written history of the city and the county of Durham. And whereas Jean Bradley Anderson, a Phi Beta Kappa graduate of the University of Pennsylvania, moved to Durham in 1955 with her husband, Dr. Carl L. Anderson. And whereas Jean Bradley Anderson, Margaret Nygaard, and several other advocates of nature preservation took an early interest in the protection of the scenic beauty and the wildlife habitat of the Eno River. And whereas Jean Bradley Anderson has written several books that feature the multi-ethnic lives, the bustling times, the memorable characters, and the evolving development of Durham, from the Eno and Ankenyche Native Americans of the 1700s to the diverse and cosmopolitan nature of our 21st century city. And whereas Jean Bradley Anderson provided pivotal research for the five-volume history of our state called The Way We Lived in North Carolina, which was produced by the State Department of Archives and History. And whereas Jean Bradley Anderson holds the distinction of having taught at Duke University, at North Carolina Central University, and at Durham Technical Community College. And whereas Jean Bradley Anderson has been involved with many historical, genealogical, artistic, and preservation groups in Durham and beyond. And whereas Jean Bradley Anderson has been presented with numerous honors, including induction into the North Caroliniana Society, and the receipt of the Bartlett Durham Award from Preservation Durham. And whereas Jean Bradley Anderson was one of the numerical contributors to the book 27 Views of Durham, The Bull City in Prose and Poetry. Steve Shul, some of you may know him, wrote the introduction to this collection. Now, therefore, and I'm reading as it is here, I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, and the Durham City Council salute Jean Bradley Anderson and wishes to begin the 13-month parade of sesquicentennial programs, events, activities by thanking Mrs. Anderson for her comprehensive work as a historical ambassador for the city and county of Durham, North Carolina. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 5th day of March, 2018, and is signed by Steve Shul, our mayor. It is presented.
I'm speechless after that. I'm very grateful to the mayor, Mr. Shul, members of the council, and to Mr. Davis especially, for this honor. I've been in Durham a long time, as he said, I came in 1959, and during that time, I've had a lot of things to do and a lot of people to meet. When we first came, my husband and I and my son, I was struck with how kind everyone was. I was from Philadelphia, and in the north, we didn't have such very nice manners, and we weren't so warm and hospitable. But right away, we began to feel very much at home. And I had an intense history, interest in history right from the start because I had never lived in the south before, but I had always wanted to. And during all that time, I have met many wonderful people here, and many of their ancestors, too, because most of my time was spent in the archives or the libraries researching the past. I'm delighted that you're going to be celebrating the history for the next 12 months, and I look forward to those events. I think it's so important for everyone to know the history of the place we live. It will add immensely to our understanding and our enjoyment of every day. I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity to write the history, and it's very gratifying to know that it's, has proved useful. Thank you again for this honor. I'm, I'm very grateful. The son I spoke of is here, and my daughter, who was the only native Durhamite in our family, is here, and my good friend, who lives at the Forest of Duke, and has been a very loyal help to me, and two of my grandsons, one the daughter of my son, Carl Anderson, and the other, the daughter of my daughter, I mean, the son of my daughter, Alexander Justanis. I'm so glad they were able to come from quite a distance, one from Germany, to be with me tonight.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Roger's earth.
I remember you so well from that 27 years of Durham.
Yes, yes, yes. That was fun. That was a lot of fun.
Thank you so much. Let me walk down with you.
Thank you.
Before we go, we'd like to make sure that the members of the council, the manager, the attorney, and the clerk all have copies of Mrs. Anderson's book, courtesy of the Duke University Press.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Anderson, thank you for gracing us tonight. And Councilmember Davis, thank you so much for initiating our parade towards our sesquicentennial celebration in April of 2019. Thank you so much. And thanks to the family for being here, we appreciate it. I did take a course with Carl Anderson many years ago and enjoyed it quite a lot, so. All right, I believe we are now down to announcements by the council. Are there any announcements by members of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Hello, friends in the chamber. Mr. Mayor, in addition to being a proud brand ambassador for the city, one of the things I'm proud of is being Durham's official representative to the National League of Cities, a national municipal, North Carolina League of Municipalities. This week, the National League of Cities will be holding their Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC. My announcement is that this will be my first official trip since election. I think it's important because many people consider Durham an oasis in the midst of our state and see us as a bastion of progressivism, but our continued way of life will only be able to exist if we foster strong working relationships in Raleigh and in DC, notwithstanding partisan affiliation. So while in DC, I plan on caucusing with our legislative representatives there to talk about light rail funding, RDU funding, and something else I plan on bringing up is the concealed carry reciprocity law, which is on the horizon, which of course, we're very concerned about gun violence here in Durham. I say all this to say that in addition to us as councilmembers talking to legislators, I just want to ask citizens to stay engaged, not just sending us letters and emails, but to contact Raleigh and contact DC as well, and let your voices be heard, in addition to our voices being heard in those halls, in order to preserve the way of life we have here in Durham. So I'm looking forward to that trip, and I look forward to reporting back when I get back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other announcements, councilmembers? All right, now we will move to the, the business, first order of business, are there any priority items by the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Shul. Members of the council, good evening, no priority items.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no priority items.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor, no items.
Thank you very much. All right, now we will move to the consent agenda. The, all items on the consent agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council, unless an item is removed by a councilmember or the member of the public for separate consideration at the end of the meeting tonight. So I'm gonna now read the consent agenda items. Item one, Mayor's Council for Women Appointments. Let me just say before we go on that after these appointments are approved, we will have the swearing-in of these, of these, of the members of this council. Item one, Mayor's Council for Women Appointments. Item two, Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Appointment. Item three, Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment. Item four, selection of the external auditor. Item five, 2017 Municipal Primary and Municipal General Elections. Item six, Woodcroft Parkway Extension Municipal Agreement, U-5823. Item seven, Replacement Radio Systems for Transit Vehicles. Item eight, Replacement of Light Transit Vehicles. Item nine, Central Park Waterline Replacement Project Amendment Two. Item 10, West Main Street and North Elizabeth Street Waterline Replacements Contracted Professional Engineering Services. Item 11, Electric Service Agreement with Duke Energy Carolina's LLC for North Durham Water Reclamation Facility. Item 12, The Bid Report for January 2018. Item 13, Lease of Cleveland Street Parking Lot for City of Durham Employee Parking. Item 14, Durham Sustainability Roadmap Adoption. Item 15, Second Amendment to Asset Management Contract. Item 16, Telecommunications License Agreement with South Carolina Telecommunications Group, LLC, DBA Spirit Communications.
I have a quick question on 16.
All righty, we will pull item 16 from the consent agenda, and we will hear it after the public hearings. Thank you. Item 17, Utility Extension Agreement of 512 Gordon Streets, LLC to serve the Gordon Street Towns Project. Item 19 to 21, these items can be found on the General Business Agenda under Public Hearings, with the exception of item 16?
It was the 16.
With the exception of item 16, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Great, thank you very much. Now, normally at this time, we would move into our public hearings, but we are going to have a special ceremony now for those members of the, of the Mayor's Women's Commission, our first members of our inaugural group of our Mayor's Women's Commission members, Mayor's Council, I'm sorry, Mayor's Council for Women. And I'm gonna call their names, not all of them are here tonight, but for those who are here, could you please come up to this microphone over here? And the city clerk will swear you into office. Nana Asante Smith, Nida Alam, Ashley Kennedy, Gloria de Los Santos, Mina Ezicpe, Megan McCurley, Dolly Reeves, Amy Koch, and Rebecca Miel. And it looks like several of them are here. And our clerk will. at the end of the meeting tonight. So I'm going to now read the consent agenda items. Item one, Mayor's Council for Women Appointments. Let me just say, before we go on, that after these appointments are approved, we will have the swearing-in of these, of the members of this council. Item one, Mayor's Council for Women Appointments. Item two, Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Appointment. Item three, Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment. Item four, selection of the external auditor. Item five, 2017 Municipal Primary and Municipal General Elections. Item six, Woodcroft Parkway Extension Municipal Agreement U-5823. Item seven, replacement radio systems for transit vehicles. Item eight, replacement of light transit vehicles. Item nine, Central Park Waterline Replacement Project Amendment Two. Item 10, West Main Street and North Elizabeth Street Waterline Replacements Contracted Professional Engineering Services. Item 11, Electric Service Agreement with Duke Energy Carolina's LLC for North Durham Water Reclamation Facility. Item 12, the bid report for January 2018. Item 13, lease of Cleveland Street Parking Lot for City of Durham Employee Parking. Item 14, Durham Sustainability Roadmap Adoption. Item 15, Second Amendment to Asset Management Contract. Item 16, Telecommunications License Agreement with South Carolina Telecommunications Group LLC, DBA Spirit Communications.
I have a quick question on 16.
All righty. We will pull item 16 from the consent agenda, and we will hear it after the public hearings. Thank you. Item 17, Utility Extension Agreement of 512 Gordon Streets LLC to serve the Gordon Street Towns Project. Item 19 to 21, these items can be found on the general business agenda under public hearings. With the exception of item 16? Is that what we pulled?
It was the 16.
With the exception of item 16, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, normally, at this time, we would move into our public hearings, but we are going to have a special ceremony now for those members of the Mayor's Women's Commission, our first members, of our inaugural group of our Mayor's Women's Commission members, Mayor's Council, I'm sorry, Mayor's Council for Women. And I'm going to call their names. Not all of them are here tonight, but for those who are here, could you please come up to this microphone over here? And the city clerk will swear you into office. Nana Asante Smith, Nida Alam, Ashley Kennedy, Gloria de Los Santos, Mina Ezicpe, Megan McCurley, Dolly Reeves, Amy Koch, and Rebecca Miel. And it looks like several of them are here. And our clerk will now do the honors. Diana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we ready? Okay. I state your name. Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and maintain
(inaudible)
the Constitution and laws of the United States
(inaudible)
and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith
(inaudible)
and that I will faithfully and impartially
(inaudible)
discharge the duties of my office
(inaudible)
as a member of the Mayor's Council for Women
(inaudible)
so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you very much to our city clerk, and thank you for all those members who were able to be here tonight. Let me just say quickly to the Mayor's Council on Women, we will soon be convening you. Myself and Mayor Pro Tem Gillian Johnson will be getting together with you all for your first meeting, and that will be soon. We're looking forward to it. Do you have any comments on that, Ms. Johnson?
I'm really excited to get started. Deidre Ann and I were just saying, it feels significant that we're here with a proclamation for the Girl Scouts and a proclamation for women's history and swearing in our Women's Council. So we're really excited. It's a good, it is. It's a great night.
Thank you. Thank you. We had 28 applicants. We had a very hard job. We chose nine members. We had 28 applicants, and that's, it was very difficult to do, but we have some fantastic members of this council. Now I'm going to move on to our public hearing items. And I'm going to begin with item 19, Consolidated Annexation for 5220 Wake Forest Highway. We're having a, we're having a photography pause. Ms. Sunyak, come on up and get us started. Thanks.
Good evening. First off, all items listed before you tonight have been properly noticed in accordance with statute, and the affidays are on file with the planning staff.
Can you introduce yourself?
I am Jamie Sunyak with the Planning Department.
Thank you.
First case is the consolidated annexation for 5220 Wake Forest Highway. Requests for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, plan amendment, and zoning map change have been received from Eastwood Homes of Raleigh LLC for one parcel totaling 14.919 acres. The subject site is located at 5220 Wake Forest Highway. This annexation petition, which is case BDG 170008, seeks to bring the parcel into the existing city limits. The subject site is presently zoned rural residential. The applicant is requesting a zoning designation of Plan Development Residential 5.362 and has committed to a maximum of 79 townhouse residential units. The parcel is currently designated as low-density residential for dwelling units per acre, and the applicant has requested an amendment to low-medium-density residential, which is four to eight dwelling units per acre, which would be consistent with the zone change. Approval of the annexation petition, plan amendment, and zoning would become effective on March 31, 2018. Key commitments on the development plan associated with this request include specifically townhouse units, a 50-foot building setback, an additional tree coverage along the southern property line, increased project boundary buffers abutting PID 166180, which is one of the properties to the west. At least 51% of the units will have only single-bay garages and additional asphalt for a future bicycle lane. The Public Works and Water Management Departments have determined that the existing water and sewer mains have the capacity for the proposed development. The Budget and Management Services Department have determined that the proposed annexation will become revenue-positive immediately following the annexation. Additional information can be found in the staff report. The Durham Planning Commission, at their November 14, 2017, meeting, recommended approval of the FLAM designation and the Plan Development Residential District by vote of 8 to 4. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the applicable policies and ordinances. Four motions are required for this application. The first is required by law to approve the utility extension agreement and the voluntary annexation petition. The second is adoption of a resolution amending the FLAM designation. The third is to adopt a consistency statement, and the fourth is for the zoning ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We've heard the report of staff, and now I'm now going to declare this public hearing open, and I'm first going to ask if there are questions or comments by members of the All right. Any questions or comments at this point by members of the council? Okay, we have two people who have signed up to speak on this item, Tim Seivers and there's someone who said they're an opponent but did not sign their name, unfortunately. So let me just ask those people who would like to speak, if you would raise your hand just to make sure that we have everyone. Okay, so, Tim, and sir, would you, would you mind coming over here and fill out another card and put your name on it? Thank you very much. Mr. Seivers, you are a proponent of this, and I believe this gentleman is an opponent, and so I'm going to give you five minutes.
Okay.
And if you don't need to use it all, you can reserve it for any other comments you might like to make.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for your time, members of the staff, and I appreciate your work, as well as the meeting with the councilmembers over the last few weeks. The request in front of you tonight is for a future land use map rezoning and annexation of this parcel. The neighborhood meeting was held on May, and approximately 25 members were in attendance. Since then, I've provided email updates, as well as recently, this past week, reaching out to some of the adjacent property owners on the cul-de-sac to make sure they were informed about the road interconnection that would be provided if this project is approved. The future land use map is a change. Currently, it is less than four units per acre, and we're requesting a change to medium, low-medium density, which is four to eight units per acre. Our development plan will limit this to 5.3 units per acre, which is on the lower end of that four-to-eight unit range. We'll provide a transition between the existing commercial and low-density residential. It'll also prevent inappropriate expansion of the two commercial nodes to the east and to the west. The accommodating rezoning request is change RR to PDR 5.3. This will, this will complement the surrounding area nodes, as well as the residential subdivision to the south. Our project includes commitments of 79 townhome residential units with building materials similar to the single-family residential development we know as Ravenstone. We will construct NC 98 to a full three-lane section between the Commercial Shopping Center and Hillview Drive, including an exclusive westbound left-turn lane at the site entrance and an eastbound right-turn lane at the site entrance. Provide additional asphalt for bike lane, tree coverage, boundary buffers, and a maximum of 50% impervious air coverage. During the planning commission, we agreed to provide additional setbacks, as Ms. Sunyak provided in her review. While meeting with some of the neighbors, planning commission members, and members of the council, a few concerns were brought to our attention that I would like to review. Traffic, the road improvements committed tonight and on our development plan provide reasonably expected, will help mitigate the reasonably expected traffic for 79 townhome unit subdivision. The interconnection of the adjacent development will allow multiple points of access for this project. NC DOT and the City of Durham are working together on the NC 98 corridor project, which you all know will provide improvements from Durham to Wake Forest. And in addition, a signal is proposed just to the east at Olive Branch, an NC 98 intersection, which will help slow traffic along the front of this property. Stormwater. The project area currently does not contain any stormwater measures, allowing the runoff to flow onto the adjacent properties without treatment. An irrigation pond, an existing irrigation pond, was removed by the homeowner and provided absolutely no treatment to the stormwater. Our project will provide treatment and necessary erosion and stormwater controls as the city's stormwater controls, measurements have become increasingly stringent over the last few years. This development has stormwater devices that potentially make things better for the downstream residents. Tree coverage, natural areas, and open space. The developer and I are very aware of the need to connect open space and natural areas of existing trees. To accommodate, to accommodate this, we would like to add a commitment tonight to provide a 25-foot natural area along the southern boundary line. That will be in the same location as the 50-foot building setback. The natural area will provide existing trees to remain undisturbed along the existing single-family houses and provide a connection of the existing open space area within the Ravenstone subdivision. In addition, we'd like to commit to providing a minimum of 15% tree save. This will allow existing trees to remain, as well as plant new material for the future. The off-site sidewalk connection on NC 98. After the planning commission meeting and the suggestion to provide this connection, the developer and I have agreed to provide this connection and agree that it will be as needed for the connection to the Ravenstone Shopping Center. Recently approved site plan for Goodwill Community Foundation will construct about half of the sidewalk between our site and the Ravenstone Shopping Center. We agreed to provide the remaining portion, which is approximately 300 feet, 300, approximately 305 feet. However, this, this location is in the county, and we've been working with the county, the planning department, to currently come up with some information about how and who will provide maintenance and liability for this location. And I know there'll be questions on that in a few minutes. The school system. We would like to provide an additional proffer tonight for a $500...
Mr. Seivers, I'm going to go ahead and let you finish that proffer, and then I'm going to ask our next speaker to come, and then we'll see if we have questions for you.
Okay. I have two additional proffers.
Go ahead. You can say them both. If we need to give more time to the opponents, we'll do so.
Thank you. The school system, we'd like to provide an additional proffer tonight for a $500 contribution to the Durham Public School Systems for each additional student added by this development. And the second proffer I'd like to add, of course, is affordable housing. It's been a very hot topic, and I did have some additional comments, but I'll sum it up in saying the developer and I are aware of this need, and we would like to provide an $8,000 one-time donation to the Affordable Housing, I think it's Affordable Housing Fund, or work with a local developer, for example, CASA, that can provide affordable housing here in Durham. Thank you. If I have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you very much. I'm sure there'll be questions, but I'm now going to ask Mr. Jonathan Tally if he would like to speak. As Mr. Tally is coming forward, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Thank you. Mr. Tally, you have five minutes. You don't have to take it all at once, if you would like to save some of it.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Sir, could you state your name and address?
Jonathan Tally, 220 Hillview Drive, Durham. Good evening. I'm not going to take up very much of your time. I was able to send a correspondence to you all with some topics that I was, felt pretty strongly about, and I'll just summarize a few of those, and maybe some of the time later, like to address those, that'd be fine. The development in general, I didn't find was, let me start over. I've been involved with this development and the public hearings that they've had with the members of our community from the beginning and throughout the time. We've had a lot of questions and concerns about many of these topics. These are some of mine. I didn't find that the development was consistent with our community or the comprehensive plan. The low-medium-density housing zone that was requested isn't similar to any of the other communities around our community, our neighboring communities' developments that are, that are popping up around us. Also, one of the big topics was the economics. I remember early on, the developer mentioned that any smaller or any more rural residential zoning, lower-density zoning, wouldn't be economic for the development, and that really hit many of us in Ravenstone, because we were involved in a failed development fiasco a bit, where developer was overstretched and they weren't able to continue and finish our community. So, economics and situations that involve such a tight budget concern a lot of folks. You know, if the economy turns around or something like that, we might find ourselves with another failed development just next door to us. Many of the other items were revolved around transportation and the busy corridor that's Highway 98. It's already very busy in the morning and evening. This would just be more cars on the road, and even adding things like a bike lane and pedestrian traffic next to that road. I would love to walk to the grocery store at the corner, but I can't because of the traffic that's currently there now, and I don't know if I would feel safe on a sidewalk We just finished our stormwater and street infrastructure recently in our community, and many, many times have we had overflowing sewer grates and stormwater that flowed on that property onto our lots. So just development, continuing that, doesn't seem like it's going to be a, a positive influence to that. What I would like to see is affordable housing in other locations. I don't think that, due to the economics of this development and the location of it, there's, there's not really a good spot for affordable housing in this area. There's not easy public transportation to jobs. There's not a walking community where folks can live affordably and walk to work, take public transportation to work, and the price point in this area, I don't think that, that anyone could support that, unfortunately. I do feel like affordable housing is a very important topic, and it should be considered in other areas of Durham to where that makes viable sense. And finally, the parks and recreation in our area, we're in a Parks and Rec desert. If I want to take my family to a park, I have to drive to Wake County or Raleigh and go to a park with, with friends of ours. There's, there's nowhere for my, my child to play unless it's in our community, and I, I don't, I don't know if this development, if they're going to add a park, a small park for their residents or whatnot, but I would really love to see different types of development in our area, and not more housing, but more services for the residents. So that's all I have.
Mr. Tally, thank you very much. You might want to stay up here for a minute, Mr. Tally. Just have a seat, because councilmembers may have questions for you. Thank you. All right. Councilmembers, questions or comments at this point for the applicant or staff? Councilmember Freeman?
So, the question would be for staff, and recognizing the comment that Mr. Tally
Robert Joyner, Public Works Department. Please, repeat that question for me, please.
So specifically with the, the area that this development would be going into or that's planned, how would we address this rural development shifting to more suburban and developing a plan that makes sure that those grates aren't overflowing any more than they currently are?
So part of the requirements of the stormwater... So, part of the requirements of the stormwater division include evaluating the existing conditions downstream. And as such, they look at both the quantity and quality of the development under city rules.
And so, just making the note for the rest of council, so I voted against this on the planning commission specifically because I'm concerned about this area continuing to shift from rural to urban or urban, rural to suburban and heading into urban with the density that's pretty much developing and having a concern about the area being planned in a way that makes sure the traffic doesn't become an issue, that there is a safe way to grow so that developers can continue to develop. I feel comfortable voting for this development. I just wanna make sure that we're preparing to come up with some intermediary fixes for some of the stormwater conversations that keep arising.
Do you have any more comments on that, Robert, or anything else on the stormwater?
No, sir, but I will make sure that the stormwater team is fully informed of this matter and they will check into it.
Thank you. Councilmember Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, just a couple of questions. I know you referenced the neighbors in the adjoining cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Could you just summarize what responses or input came from those neighbors at all during this process?
A week ago today, sent a letter out to those four neighbors that are around that cul-de-sac and hadn't heard any responses. So, actually yesterday, I went and knocked on doors because I wanted to make sure they had the opportunity because their driveway will be impacted if this road is connected as the Public Works would require that the cul-de-sac be removed. So, I went and knocked on doors. Two of the four homeowners were at home when I had knocked yesterday afternoon and was able to speak with them. The two homeowners that were home are directly adjacent and they share a property line with this project, so those were the two, out of the four, they had the more impact for this development. I don't know the addresses, but the resident on the northern corner of the cul-de-sac was an elderly lady and asked that her son give me a call. Unfortunately, he was not able to call me today, but they did say that they had actually, I will quote her, "I think it's a good thing with the road connection." She was actually hopeful that the cul-de-sac would be removed and did have no problems with the development itself. The gentleman on the southern portion that abuts our property as well, his main question was, "How many units is it gonna be?" And so, I answered that, "It's a maximum of 79, that would be town home units." He as well had no major concerns with the road connection and had already understood that the right-of-way was previously extended past the cul-de-sac and that that's how the city requires and provides for internal connection. So, he knew that was there and when he bought his house, understood that that could be a connection in the future.
I appreciate that. One other question, you mentioned the five-foot natural area around the southern boundary line.
Yes.
Could you just explain what natural area means? You mean a tree line?
Sure, sure. So, on the back edge of this property, that is on the southern edge, adjacent to the Ravenstone subdivision, we, this project boundary is adjacent to actually open space. So, what we wanna do is we wanna connect to their open space. And what we'll do is we'll put tree protection fence up 25 feet off of our property line and it'll stay as it sits today. Natural, there is existing vegetation in there, existing trees, mostly soft woods, but they are 30 to 40 foot tall. It's not, but it's also pretty thick in that area. So, that'll help not only provide the open space and tree coverage, but also provide a buffer to the residential parcels to the south that exist today in Ravenstone.
Thank you. Mayor, I just have one.
Sure, of course. Councilmember Freeman.
Actually, for Tim Silver, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Cyvers.
Cyvers, yes.
Cyvers. You mentioned the $8,000 for the fund. How did you come up with that number?
There was a couple of calculations put into that number. Again, this is a smaller subdivision, 79 units, so we took that into effect with the amount of road improvements and for this site, for 79 lots is quite a feat. So, we took that calculation and worked in the basin fees as well and the number is truly based off, it's approximately $100 per unit with our 79, that's where we came up with this number.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. Mr. Tally, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, if you don't mind? First off, thank you, Mayor, for coming out. We take our residents' input very, very seriously on this council, so I wanna thank you for taking your time and coming to talk to us. I wanna be clear, because I was listening to you very intently, is it your understanding that this is an affordable housing development or an attempt at affordable housing?
No, sir. It was my understanding that during the planning commission, there was a lot of talk of affordable housing and there was a lot of back and forth with the developer about what might be considered affordable housing, what type of homes were coming out of this community. And while there wasn't enough information available, there was a lot of talk back and forth. So, it's my understanding that this wasn't, but I'm also under the impression that there's not a clear definition for developers to be making affordable housing considerations for the development.
You also mentioned your concerns about traffic patterns. Would the proffers made by the developer not address your concerns about traffic? To talk about the widening of roads, would that not address it?
So, the proffers were quick at the end there, so I might not have catched them all, but I believe it was a bike lane, a widening of a turn lane or addition of a center turn lane. And during one of the meetings with some of the other residents of my community, we all talked about how, you know, those lanes were kinda classified as, terrible name, but a suicide lane because of traffic and moving fast on both sides and people try to turn out of that lane and make a left turn in the community. And honestly, during heavy congestion, it's a standstill. So, anyone trying to make that turn is kinda gunning their car. So, I don't know if making it safer would be my agreement.
And finally, let me ask you, just to be honest with you, as a policymaker, that parcel's probably, it's not gonna stay blank forever, empty forever. So, ideally, what would you wanna see go there if not this type of development?
My main concern about this type of development is the fact that it's not consistent with our development and developments around us.
What do you mean by consistent?
The amount of homes per acre is, it's a higher-density development than our development. So, the more people per lot, the more infrastructure, the more traffic and the less services to be divided up around those people.
Okay, thank you, sir. I have one question for the developer. Full disclosure, we talked very directly about the proffers when you met with me in my office and I appreciate the proffer to the Affordable Housing Fund, $8,000. If instead of giving us $8,000, you talked about working with a local developer.
Correct.
What would that look like? And you wouldn't cap that help at $8,000. I don't, how would you quantify? Is it possible that we can get more out of you in working with a developer than an $8,000 cash?
So, we'd like to stick to the $8,000, but work, I think with, I think with working as a potentially an option to work with CASA as an example or Habitat for Humanity or there's other great institutions that do affordable housing in the area, private development may go further with that $8,000 than public development way, but that's why we left it open to be a donation to the public as the city of Durham for the Affordable Housing Fund or a private donation for CASA.
So, if you worked for someone with an organization like CASA or Habitat, you would quantify $8,000 worth of work with them in some form or fashion?
I don't fully understand your question. So, it's an $8,000 donation.
Right, but if, okay, so is it either/or or if you don't give us $8,000 and you work with a, we say, instead of giving us $8,000, partner with a developer to do some type of affordable housing project, do you have some type of internal equation by which you'll cap it at $8,000 working with a developer instead of, if you didn't give us the $8,000, us being the city?
Still don't follow your question, sir. So, the options that we've brought and maybe this is the confusing part, we would like to, we'd like to provide an $8,000 donation.
But I heard you also say or, and correct me if I'm wrong, or work with a local...
Meaning, meaning the donation would either go to the city or to CASA.
Ah, the donation, okay.
So, it's an $8,000 donation to somebody.
I got you.
To an affordable housing developer, whether that's the city or a private fund.
Got you, got you, got you. So, the $8,000 is static.
Sorry about that.
I got you correct. All right, thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Caballero.
I also have questions for the developer really quick. I know the answer to this question, but could you share the price point for the townhomes?
Yeah, the price point to start is approximately $200 to $225,000.
Thank you. And then when you're talking about the turn lane, could you just share a little bit more about that just so I can have like a visual of what that is? Full disclosure, I drove out to the site today so I could see the impact on traffic and just how, because it seemed to be a big concern, so I wanted to experience it myself. So, I would just like more description on where its placement essentially.
Okay. In front of the Ravenstone Shopping Center, which is the food line, there are turn lanes in there. As you approach the frontage of this site, it actually goes down to two lanes, which are both through lanes, and then back to the next intersection, which is where the future traffic line will be, it goes back to three lanes with turn lanes. Again, the front of our site is just two through lanes. So, what we're gonna do is right at the front, we're actually gonna double that, we're gonna create four lanes. So, there'll be a dedicated eastbound turn lane and a dedicated westbound turn lane. So, anyone that is turning will not be sitting in traffic and, you know, they'll be out of the way of the through traffic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other questions or comments? I have a couple. I also drove out there and just one question I have, I guess I'd like to ask staff, Mr. Judge, do you have comments that you'd like to make about the sufficiency of the proffers regarding traffic that Mr. Cyvers has talked to us about?
Yes, Bill Judge Transportation, the proffers related to the left and right turn lane construction to provide, as Mr. Cyvers indicated, are requirements of the city and NC DOT. So, they are meeting those requirements as well as the, we requested the additional four foot of asphalt widening for the frontage of the site to provide for bicycle accommodations and they provided that as well.
And in your estimation, are these requirements sufficient to handle the traffic that you believe that will be added to our roads through this development?
Yes, those turn lanes are needed, as Mr. Cyvers indicated, in order to provide a safe location for vehicles entering the site to move out of the through lanes of traffic on NC 98.
Thank you. So, I guess this is a question for planning. Mr. Cyvers indicated that the developer would like to proffer the construction of 305 feet of sidewalk, but that that sidewalk is in the county and would require the county to maintain it, which the county does not typically do. So, I'm wondering if staff has any comments on that.
Yes, it was our understanding that there was an interest in constructing a sidewalk. Full disclosure, planning staff has received calls from one of the neighbors who abuts the property and she wasn't necessarily opposed to having the sidewalk constructed there, but her concern was the liability and the maintenance of the sidewalk. The applicant, as he mentioned earlier, has introduced a proffer for the construction of the sidewalk, but it is problematic for the reasons stated. It's not located within, the property is not located within the city limits. So, my, there has been some back and forth between the planning staff and the applicant as late as a couple hours before and there are a couple of options that have been suggested. And before the applicant mentions that, I just wanted to state for the record so we have good housekeeping, the applicant does need to come up and go through the entire list of proffers from the beginning so that we have a clear record of exactly what they are.
Thank you, we'll do that in a few minutes. Thank you, Ms. Sounyak. Why don't you talk to us now about the options for the sidewalk?
Good evening, Pat Young with the Planning Department. Jamie did a great job, but just to put a fine point on what she said, the only option for that sidewalk to be constructed, NC DOT will not maintain it and the county will not maintain it. The applicant will have to seek a private agreement with the property owners to maintain the sidewalk. So, the proffer is contingent on that and because the existing current owner has expressed her unwillingness and lack of interest in that, there's a concern about this proffer being implemented. So, I just wanna be really...
Understand.
...clear.
Thank you very much.
I think that came through, but I wanted to be pointed on, thank you.
Okay, so then in other words, the options that exist would be, what you've just outlined, Pat, then is the option that exists, which is that there would be a private agreement between the developer and the property owners, that there would be an agreement that the property owners would maintain this sidewalk.
That's right, that's the only party that has a legal ability to do that, that there's no annexation being proposed for those adjacent sites.
So, in effect then, I assume that that proffer is not effective at this point?
It's, the way I'd say it is it's contingent on that agreement being reached with the adjacent property owners.
Is that something, is that a kind of contingent proffer that we are familiar with and can take?
Yes, and that's why Ms. Sounyak asked that the applicant read the detailed language that they sent us today, that makes that contingency clear.
Is the contingency, the burden then, I would assume, would fall to the developer to do this, make the contact with the private property owners?
It would. So, what we've asked for, and I believe they're prepared to proffer, that'll be up to the applicant, of course, is that there would be some kind of offer of just compensation to do this. It wouldn't just be a request.
I see.
But the owner, of course, still could then refuse that and then the sidewalk would not get built at this time.
I understand, thank you. That was very helpful.
Got a question. Pat? The sidewalk, is there an option to construct the sidewalk on public property if someone would accept it or is there not space enough to construct that sidewalk?
So, that's a very good question and it's not clear. There's a possibility this sidewalk may be able to fit an existing right-of-way. There's a, this is what's called ribbon paving, there's not curb at this location, it would have to be behind an adjacent ditch for safety purposes. If you've been past the site, the adjacent credit union site has got that style of construction. And so, to answer your question, Mr. Manager, part of this would be obtaining the rights possibly to use the joiner's private property to put the sidewalk in and therefore get an access easement as well as a maintenance agreement.
And this is sidewalk, the developer could construct a portion of sidewalk on their property on Highway 98?
So, the applicant will be required to build a portion of the sidewalk on their property.
And then going back to the east from there?
Right, so going back, this is actually to the west, I think, what's, towards the shopping center is what's being, right, subject of the proffer. And that's where they would either need to work with DOT to put it in their right-of-way and get the adjoining property owner to maintain it or actually acquire the rights to the property from the property owner and have them maintain it. Those are the options.
Are you aware of any plans or potential development on that adjacent property back to the west between there and the shopping center?
There's one segment that the applicant referred to, the goodwill property that is under site plan and will have to build the sidewalk, but there's another 300 approximate foot, I believe it's a single-family residence and there's no imminent plans for that to be redeveloped or changed. I think over the medium term, certainly, that's likely, given the development pattern out there, but there's no plans.
We've not had situations in the past where developers made a contribution to the city sidewalk fund in lieu of building a sidewalk and could that be an option in this case so that when and if that property is finished and developed, that money could be used toward that completion?
Yes, that's an option. It couldn't be constructed and maintained in that location until such time it was a Xanax, but yes, your idea is legal and possible and has been done previously. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager, for those questions. And thank you, Councilmember Caballero, for pointing out the price point, which was a question I had as well. So, let's, why don't we do this then, Mr. Cyvers, why don't you make explicit the proffers and let's have our staff... let's have our staff let you know whether or not they work for us, okay?
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Again, Tim Cybers, Horvath Associates. So I'll start with the sidewalk, since that's the hot topic. The developer shall construct a five-foot-wide sidewalk along the frontage of 5218 and 5210 Wake Forest Highway, west of the project frontage, for approximately 305 linear feet to connect with the approved site plan, D 1600042, if either of the following options are accepted by the property owners, City of Durham, NC DOT, prior to the site plan. Option one, additional right of way is not needed for the construction of the sidewalk, and property owners adjacent to the sidewalk will provide maintenance and liability, which we discussed is currently not an option because of the existing owner. Option two, additional right of way is not needed for the construction of the sidewalk, and the right of way adjacent to 5218 and 5210 Wake Forest Highway are annexed into the city limits at no cost to the developer. And tonight, staff, I would also like to add in there a third option, as the city manager mentioned, that we would be able to, or we would commit to adding an option for the payment in lieu of that 305 feet, so it can be developed in the future if needed.
Thank you. Let's wait and get the other proffers in a minute. Let's go ahead and discuss that one, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
So the, I assume that the payment in lieu would need to carry some sort of dollar figure or formula with it. Can we hear from staff on that?
Good evening, Pat Young again with the Planning Department. So that's set at $65 a linear foot for the 305 feet, and that's the prevailing rate and is in current city code. So the applicant could proffer a different amount, but that's the standard amount.
$65 per linear foot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And for the record, it is flat out there, so
Okay.
It is commensurate roughly.
Thank you. Mr. Cybers?
Yes, sir.
Can you refine your proffer to proffer the sidewalk in lieu payment at that rate?
Yes, sir. Do I need to state that again?
Yeah, that'd be good. I think they like it when you do it, not when I do.
As a third option, we would be willing to proffer the payment in lieu at $65 a linear foot for the 305 linear feet of the adjacent sidewalk.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Cybers, you want to go through your other proffers now to make sure that we're all on the same page?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'm sorry to interrupt. I wanted to ask the applicant to clarify, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
The way you phrased that commitment, it sounded like it was an option or choice of the applicant, whether to choose option A, B, or C.
I see.
And that doesn't seem to express the intent of the conversations happening there. You have the right to do that, but I wanted, I was hoping you would clarify that.
Yes, I apologize. That was not my, not my intent. We will do, we will do one of those three options, and it looks like it's likely is the payment in lieu. Does that clarify?
At the city's discretion?
Correct.
It's at the city's discretion.
At the city's discretion.
Okay, that's the clarification that's helpful.
Yes, that is fine.
Thank you, Mr. Cybers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And how about your other proffers?
Okay. The second proffer was mentioned, that was we would provide a 25-foot-wide natural area along the southern boundary limits, as indicated on sheet D 100. And I will provide that updated plan sheet to the planning staff. Number three, a minimum of 15% tree save area will be provided. Number four, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provide a one-time $500 contribution to the Durham Public Schools for each additional student estimate to be added by this development. Number five, and last one, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provide a one-time $8,000 donation to the City of Durham Dedicated Housing Fund, or a local affordable housing developer to assist with the development of affordable housing here in Durham.
Thank you. I'm going to, just to, for clarification, we're on the same page here. There are three students at it, is that correct, is your understanding?
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
How many students is, are, will be
That is correct, yes.
Three, is that right? And so this will be a $1,500 proffer?
That is correct.
And when would that payment be made?
Prior to certificate of occupancy.
Okay. How about, I'm just going to suggest that you proffer the affordable housing money to the city's dedicated housing fund, then we can work with the nonprofits, and I think that would work best. How would you feel about that?
That's fine, sir, yes.
Right. And then, yeah, I think those are my only questions. Anybody else have any questions or comments at this point? Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim had a question for you about this development. I didn't, I looked through the materials. I didn't see anything about like a little play area. What do they call it? A tot lot? Does that sound right? I don't know what I'm talking about. Is there a little play area intended for this development for the folks who live there?
Yes, that's not shown on the development plan, sir, because it's actually a UDO requirement. So yes, it is a good thing. There will be, not necessarily a tot lot, but the option is there for some sort of active play area. Could be a soccer field, it could be a playground, but there will be some sort of park area on this development.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I just have a few comments to make, and councilmembers may have some others. First of all, Mr. Tally, I want to thank you for coming out. Really appreciate it. And your questions really helped me think about what my questions ought to be, and I know it did for my colleagues as well, so thank you. Let me just say a couple of things I think that occurred to me about this. I do think that this is a price point that we need to be building houses at in Durham, that there are a lot of people in Durham who are having a hard time affording a home to own at higher price points that we're seeing so often in Durham. And I think that for many people, that this is a good price point, and this is a, this is a level of housing affordability that we need more of. And the density, on the density question, and I understand, Mr. Tally, where you're coming from on this, but I do think that this is at the lower area of the, what's on the site plan, is it the development plan, site plan, development plan? Is it on the lower end of the permissible density here with the rezoning? And I don't, I think that one of the things in Durham that we're going to have to get used to is that we need more density. We are, we are either going to be building houses, or we're going, the prices of housing in Durham is going to go through the roof, and we're not going to have enough housing for people. So I think there is a limit to density. We want to be careful, but to me, I'll just say for myself, that this, that this development definitely does not go over that limit, and I think is actually at a pretty good density in this, in this situation. So I think those are my only comments. Any other, I do want to say one other thing. I appreciated Councilmember Freeman's initial remarks about this corridor. And I know that this is your neighborhood, and whoever your new neighbors will be do, this is a, this is a busy corridor. And so I think my mic just went off. Can you, can you hear me?
It's not on.
Lean into your mics, Steve.
I've got
It's rad.
Yeah. I wear two mics, if you can believe that, because apparently I don't speak loud enough. So now I'll speak into my third. The, I appreciate what Councilmember Freeman had to say about this corridor. There is a corridor study, as she mentioned, that's going on for 98. But that is a ways off. The results of it are a ways off. And I just want to say to our members of, and it will only do a few things. It's not going to do the kind of small area planning that you've referred to. So I just want to say to our members of Joint City-County Planning, of which I'm not a member, that this might be something that you want to take to Joint City-County Planning. I'm not sure how high up the priority list it will get, given the tremendous demands on the planning staff, but I think that is probably the right venue to start introducing that as a, as some kind of planning that needs to occur. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. Appreciate your calling now. All right, councilmembers, any other comments or questions? Please.
I want to echo a thank you for mentioning that it should go through, or a kind of a process it could go through is through the Joint City-County Planning. I'm also not a member, so it's up to you guys. I want to just point or just say to Mr. Tally, I do also, I hear your concerns, and I really appreciate the way that the developer has tried to kind of meet you halfway on most of that. I hope you feel like that's been the case, and if you don't, that you'll continue to speak with them through the process, because it doesn't just stop here. And I want to say to Mr. Cybers, I appreciate you taking the initiative to actually create the tree save area. I know we had a conversation about that, and then also thinking about the affordable housing, and even though it's not something that would happen on your site, being proactive about being engaged in what the city needs as a priority. And I also want to commend you as well on taking the initiative to do the $500 per student amount. I just want to say that this, this is like a turning point. So I've served on the planning commission for almost four years, and I know that the developers of our city or developers around the country are coming here to Durham, and we want to welcome them, but we want to be sure that the needs of Durham are met. And so I really want to thank you again for trying to meet those needs and to listening to our residents who are existing in the community as well.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'm going to, let me ask, let me ask one more time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? All righty. If not, then I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter's back before the council.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to adopt the ordinance, and it's annexing 5220 Wake Forest Highway. Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
They're back on.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. My mics are back on again. Thank you. I buzz now. Thank you very much. We have a motion from Councilmember Austin to adopt, for motion one, to adopt the ordinance annexing 5220 Wake Forest Highway. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
If I could just
Councilmember Austin, would you like to make a second motion?
I would, but it appears that count, nope, nope. Motion to adopt a resolution amending the future land use map.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Freeman, did you have a comment?
No, I was just also going to say I want to also commend the planning commission for being as detailed and keeping an eye on these developments as they occur, especially
I agree. Thank you. Their comments are always extremely helpful. All right, we have a motion and a second. A motion two, any discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adopt consistency statement.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the consistency statement. Any discussion? Not? Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Councilmember Austin?
And a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the ordinance amendment UDO. Is there any discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
A motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for being here on this item. For those of you all who came for this, neighbors and the applicant, we appreciate it. We're now going to move on to item 20, the street closing for Ren Road, and we'll hear the staff report on that.
Good evening, Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department. Ellis Road Residential LP proposes to close 896 linear feet of public right of way in order to conform with the approved site plan for Ellis Road Phase Two. This is case D 1400380. The right of way is currently dedicated, and a portion is improved. If the request is approved, the closed right of way will, acreage will be added to the adjacent parcels, both owned by Ellis Road Residential LP. Staff recommends that the council approve the permanent closing of 896 linear feet of the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanyak. We have now heard the staff report, and I'm going to declare this public hearing open. First of all, are there any questions by members of the council for staff? Any questions by council colleagues? If not, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Anyone here who would like to speak on this item? All right, any other questions, councilmembers?
Just raising a general concern, anytime that we're closing a public street and turning it into private property. I don't know if there's any conveyance of, like a fee or however, but just trying to figure out if this is
Okay, well, maybe staff can answer that question for us. Is there any fee when this conveyance occurs?
Well, technically, the existing public right of way is going to be closed, but there will be a realigned road that will provide access, which will be a public road.
Okay.
So it's closing one and realigning and an alternative
That would be the difference, because they're just realigning where the road would go.
That's right. If you, in the staff report, you'll see one of the attachments has the approved site plan that shows the road, the new road alignment. So it's a procedural matter in order for the applicant to conform with the site plan that was approved.
All right, any more questions, Councilmember Freeman or others? All right, if not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter's back before the council. Do we have a motion?
Move departmentally close 896 linear, 896 linear feet, easy for me to say, feet of Ren Road.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the order. Any more discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Close the vote.
Seven zero. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. And now we'll move to item 21, consolidated item for NC 54 storage, and we'll hear the staff report.
Good evening, Jamie Sanyak again with the Planning Department. A request for a future land use map amendment and a zoning map change has been received for a 1.9 acre property located at 1003 East NC 54. The FLAM amendment would change the current designation of office to commercial. The applicant requests to change the zoning of the site from residential suburban 20 to commercial general with a development plan with CGD. Key commitments on the development plan associated with this request include a self-storage facility limited to 120,000 square feet building, additional right of way for a future bicycle lane, constructing a bike, I'm sorry, constructing a bus pullout and shelter on the north side of NC 54, offering a cross-access easement to the property to the east, building and parking envelopes, tree coverage locations, and project boundary buffers. The planning commission considered this request at their December 12, 2017 meeting, and recommended approval of the request by a vote of eight to four. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Action on this item will require three separate motions and votes, one for the FLAM amendment, one for the consistency statement, and one for the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sanyak. You have heard the report of staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. And first, I'm going to ask if there are any questions or comments by members of the council. All right, hearing none. We will hear from members of the public. I have here six people who have signed up to speak on this item. All of them have said that they are proponents of this, of this development. Are there any people who would like to speak as opponents of this development? Just want to make sure when I divvy up the time here, I'm being fair. Anyone who would like to speak as an opponent of this development? All right. There are six members of the, six people who have signed up as proponents. Mr. Cybers, I'm going to give you all 15 minutes. You don't have to use it all, but you may use it all. And I'm going to, would you like to start, Mr. Cybers? Who would like to start? Who would like to start? Ms. Schwedler, you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Jamie will actually start the presentation. Thank you.
Say again.
Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe on behalf of the applicant. And I'll begin and then turn it over to the remainder of the speakers.
Okay. Ms. Schwedler, I don't see that you've signed up, so when you finish tonight, would you please do so?
I can do that.
Thank you very much.
If I could just have a minute to get, I have a quick PowerPoint. If I could just have a minute before the clock starts to run. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein. I'm on behalf of the applicant. I'm at 301 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Thanks to Ms. Sanyak for going through that presentation. I'd like to just highlight several key offerings of this development and walk the council through where it's located, just to cover any questions you might have. As Ms. Sanyak stated, this is adjacent to the Barbie Road retail site on the corner of 54 and Barbie Road, also adjacent to the Greens of Pine Glen, and this is a rezoning and a future land use map amendment. Here's a view of the existing site, and this is a view of the site in context as you move from east to west along Highway 54, taking a look at both the intersection, the Barbie Road retail site that was just approved by the council in the fall, our site in the middle, and then the apartments there in the distance towards the west. The key text commitments that Ms. Sanyak highlighted are the limit to the use to self-storage, the limit on the square foot maximum. We also are limiting the distinct architectural features and the limited building elements in terms of stucco, brick, and stone. And this is done in a way to make the use low intense and also compatible with the neighbors. The limited self-storage is one of the most limiting aspects to this offer because the traffic is so low here. It limits to less than 40 trips per day. We didn't need a traffic improvement analysis, and those commitments that you see there are approved by DOT and went through the staff. I'd also like to highlight the cross-access commitment to the Barbie Road retail site. That provision specifically was a result of going through Planning Commission a second time and adjusting some of the traffic commitments so that we could have cross-access to the Barbie Road retail should the sites determine a development plan that they can work together. Adjacent uses and neighborhood engagement. We spent a good amount of time reaching out to neighbors and looking at the adjacent uses and how we could be a good neighbor. In addition to the low traffic and low use intensity that self-storage entails, we visited neighbors across the street, we visited neighbors in the Greens of Pine Glen, and we've been working with them since the required neighborhood community meeting all the way through the process. In addition, we reached out to the individual renters in the Greens of Pine Glen in the buildings that were adjacent to the site. We contacted over 72 renters. We brought with us a bilingual translator so that we could reach all of the members of that community, and we received overwhelming support. Many of them had been aware of the project and of the process, but had no concerns and had chosen not to appear. Some of them will be here tonight to talk about their favor of the project. And then highlighting some of the Planning Commission's comments, again, they echo on that low impact. It makes good sense. It's a reasonable expansion of the commercial node. The two concerns that were raised by the Planning Commission, I believe we've been able to address, and I'd like to highlight those for a second. The first was the height. There was a concern whether this height was really compatible with the adjacent uses. And we've prepared this cross-section that shows a potential building on the right, that's on the Barbie Road retail site. That site was approved for a 50-foot height limitation. Our building in the center, which would not need the full 50 feet, and so we're willing to offer a proffer to limit us to 43 feet. And then the existing two-story apartments on the left side of your screen at the Greens of Pine Glen, because they have gabled roofs, those are actually 30 feet. And so if you take a look at the topographic layout as you go down 54, and you look at the approved heights from both the Barbie Road retail to our proposed site and then down to the existing neighbors, it draws a nice line that ties in very well. And that section wasn't available for the Planning Commission to review, and so we felt important to show council how the grades work in that area and how our proposed height actually is very congruent and is a reasonable transition between the two sites. In addition, there was a concern about the...
Excuse me, Ms. Schwedler?
Yes.
Is that a proffer of the 43 feet?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it is.
Could you just state it again, please?
I could. We're willing to proffer a height limitation on any building on the site to be no higher than 43 feet. And turning to the second concern that was raised by Planning Commission about the appropriateness of the expansion of the commercial node, this area in the center shows how this new commercial node that was approved for the Barbie Road retail site fits in with the much larger commercial nodes on either side along 54 and the very small expansion that this change on the future land use map amendment from office to commercial would result. The Barbie Road retail is the large red in the center there, and our site is the rectangle pink area to the edge. As you can see, there's a lot of development that's already occurred in this corridor. It's bordered by 40 to the north, and so there simply isn't much room for it to expand. And for these reasons, both the future land use map and the rezoning are consistent with UDO 3.4.7. The change is consistent with the intent and the goals that are aligned in the staff report. It's also compatible with the existing land use pattern because it makes a small expansion of a commercial node in a low-intense way and in a way that's respectful to the neighbors, and it provides an appropriate transition between the commercial and medium density, both in terms of height and in terms of stepping down in intensity of use. And three, the change would not create substantial adverse impacts because we're, again, having that low traffic impact. We've reached out to the neighbors and have not heard any concern that we're not able to address. And four, the site is just simply too small to make comparable use in terms of office because it is so narrow, and it's much more suitable for this commercial use. Going on to the two other aspects, the nodal development and cross-access are both met by our text commitments, and you can see the policies cited there. And finally, just to note, the topography, you can see in this map how it slopes severely down from 54 and Barbie down toward the Greens of Pine Glen. There was a concern raised by council about stormwater, and we explained that not only will we have to meet, of course, all of the stormwater regulations by the city, but that there is no existing stormwater problems on the Greens of Pine Glen parcel and that there shouldn't be any added by this development. You can see how kind of substantial that is and how significant that cell tower is there in the distance. That's at least twice as high as the buildings that we're proposing. And so with that, I'd like to close and cede the rest of my time to the speakers tonight. We'd urge your support in both, the approval of both the land use amendment and the rezoning, and that it's consistent with Durham's policies and provides a reasonable transition between the commercial site and the existing neighboring uses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have five other speakers listed here, and I'm going to call your names, and if you could, please just come and line up over here, and then I'll call you up individually. Frank Boone, Kenan Borden Jr., Kristi Mullie, Jason Freed, and Danita Thompson. If you all could just come over here, that would be great, and we'll start with Mr. Boone.
Hello. My name is Kristi, and I'm the property manager at the...
Ms., excuse me. What's your name?
Kristi.
What's your last name?
Mullie.
Kristi Mullie, okay. So is Mr. Boone here?
I think they're trying to organize themselves.
Mr. Boone, are you here? Mr. Boone, you're up first.
I'm sorry.
Unless you have a reason not to go first, go ahead and talk to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
First of all, my name is Franklin Boone, and I reside at 1303 Amset Lane, which is approximately 2.4 miles from this property that they're proposing to build. I am in favor of the self-storage use. I feel that it will benefit the existing homeowners in this area, and I also, it will benefit new residents as the residential construction continues to grow in the immediate area. And I think the multi-story building use of storage would be an attractive building that will also provide a neighborhood service, and it will create, will not create any road traffic. I have not yet seen any road traffic on any storage units. I also would like to say that it will benefit as well as moving into the neighborhood areas. I have experienced my, in the past, where I needed a storage unit when I relocated, and I had to go 30 miles to find a storage unit because the high demand for storage unit in my area was so high, you know? There was just not enough, and I applaud to see new storage units come into the area. And I like to say that I appreciate the ongoing efforts of Stackhouse Properties to invest in also our affordable housing and making things, making things prosper for many Durham residents. And I'd like to thank you guys for considering this request.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. We'll now hear from Kenan Borden.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name's Kenan Borden. I live at 5 Kimberly Drive here in Durham. I am also a, one of the owners and managers of the South Point Professional Center, which is at 249 East NC Highway 54. It's approximately a ninth of a mile down from this case you're considering. As a neighboring business owner, I support this project because self-storage proposed at this site is consistent with the scale of the commercial projects in this corridor and adjoining neighborhoods. In this immediate area between Highway 55 and the South Point area, there have been rapid growth in new housing development. Self-storage in this immediate neighborhood will provide a low-impact use that directly provides a needed service to these local residents. I also think a significant advantage of this proposed use is that it will have a very low-impact, traffic-impact burden while providing a quiet transition between the apartments and the corner parcel. As neighbors, we're happy to support this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Borden. Now we'll hear from Kristi Mullie.
I'm the property manager at the Greens of Pine Glen, and we feel that it would be great for the community because we have to refer our residents elsewhere for storage, so it's very close to us. We're in favor of it. It's adjacent to our property, it's low traffic, low people traffic, and low car traffic, and we think it's a good fit for us and our neighbor as a positive working relationship with this developer. We have also assessed the tree buffer that will remain and believe it will be adequate for maintaining the quality of life of our residents. And I know there is a concern about the stormwater runoff and whether this new development would make existing problems worse. And currently, we have no flooding on our property along Highway 54 adjacent to their site. With new development, they will be required to treat the water and release it, which will help during rain events, which better control the water runoff. The property across the Highway 54 is higher, so stormwater is not an issue, and we just think it would be an immediate neighbor to the property, and we do support it.
Thank you, Ms. Mullie. And now we'll hear from Jason Freed.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jason Freed, and I live at 710 South Bend Drive, Durham, North Carolina, 27713, which is about two and a half miles west of the property. I recently moved to Durham after suffering through significant flooding in Hurricane Harvey in Houston, lost my home there, and came here in August of last year. So far, it's been great. Me and my family are settling in fine, and everyone's liking it quite well. I live just south of the South Point Mall, which is growing pretty rapidly. There's a lot of residential development there. Many of my neighbors that I'm meeting are also transplants from other parts of the country, so a lot of people are coming to Durham and specifically that area. For the location, close to I-40, close to the mall, close to work, from personal experience, from what I've researched, there is a lack of self-storage in the area. If I want to find self-storage, I need to go all the way to Highway 55 or all the way down to Highway 64. So there's nothing close to me right now that offers me self-storage options, and therefore I support this project and what it would bring to the community. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope you will support this request as well.
Thank you, Mr. Freed. Sir, thank you for, I hope, I'm sorry to hear about what happened to you in Houston, but I'm glad you're here in Durham.
Well, thank you, Durham. Thank you.
You'll like it here. Now, Ms. Danita Thompson, is she here? Okay, she must have left. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? We're going to have questions from the council members in a moment, but let me just ask, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item, either pro or con? Okay. Now I'm going to ask if there are questions or comments by members of the council. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to hate when the, in a crime drama, when there's been a trial, the judge like does all the, well, on the one hand, and on the other hand, before they give you the big ruling. Can't stand that. So I intend to vote for the rezoning tonight. I wanted to explain a little bit why, if this is the appropriate time to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
Thought that's where we were.
Absolutely.
I did not come into this process predisposed to support this despite the very good meeting I had with Mr. Cybers about this project. The reason is simple. I voted against the expansion or the creation of the commercial node at this intersection a little less than six months ago, in September 2017. I didn't think it was appropriate to develop a commercial node so close to other very intense commercial nodes along a stretch of Highway 54 that is already under significant stress from considerable residential development. Having not prevailed in seeking to prevent that prior rezoning, this particular matter now is on a different footing. I was very concerned about two aspects of it, the cross-connection, which a number of the planning commissioners raised as a significant concern to appreciate the proponent moving to make that commitment tonight. The other was the building height, and I was mindful of one of the planning commissioners who talked about the two-story difference in the buildings, and I think the drawing that we saw, the rendering we saw tonight was very instructive, and I also appreciate the additional commitment made tonight of the 43-foot limit and height on this new building. And I think, given those two changes and the fact that despite my meager efforts, the commercial node now exists and is under construction, the fact is self-storage, although we've seen a rash of self-storage approvals in recent years in southern Durham, I think it's also, we've also heard that these units are at capacity, that there's, that it's very difficult to find availability. And given the large residential growth in this particular part of our city, I think it makes sense to allow this type of use in this area, even though it intensifies a node that I will probably curse every time I drive through it for the next 50 years. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll, I intend to support the measure tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I hope you won't be cursing me. Didn't I vote for that?
No comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments or questions to this point? Councilmember Caballero.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for doing the outreach to the renters. That was something that was very important to me, and likewise, the reflying images are helpful for those of us who are not in the field. So, thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Anyone else? I have a couple. One is, the, just a question about the outreach that you did. Do you typically have a bilingual outreach, Ms. Schwedler?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor. And in fact, we met with Councilmember Caballero, and she explained that there's a lot of communities in Durham that have a high Spanish-speaking population and that we should consider in the future reaching out in a different, in a language or something that they're comfortable with. We went back to, the developer here actually owns several rental properties in the city and has a tenant representative that speaks Spanish. And so when we talked to the Greens of Pine Glen, she actually informed us that they do have a 30% Hispanic population, and so we sent them out to join the developer in those outreach programs, and we're glad we did.
Bravo to you, Councilmember Caballero, and to the developer. Thank you very much. That's a welcome, welcome addition to the outreach. I think that, yeah, here's my other question. And I believe, I'm not sure which two of you ought to take this, but what does it mean that the proffer for the cross-connection, if the two development plans coincide, or what was that language? if the two development plans coincide, or what's that language?
We, at the council meeting in September, when the Barbie Road retail site was approved, that was an offer, I believe, that was made at the table, and it was an offer for a cross-access easement to our site and would be determined at the development plan stage. And so when we went back to the planning commission, we offered the same commitment, and when the two projects are at the development site stage, we'll work to see whether and where a cross-access could be located. We don't know what their plans are at this time and where their buildings will be sited, and so we'll have to work together to make sure that something like that would be possible.
So can I ask staff, do we like that proffer? Is that a proffer that makes sense?
Yep. Bill Judge Transportation, yeah, we are aware of the proffer on the other zoning case. No site plan has been submitted on that, so we haven't really established that location. But now that we have the proffer on both development plans, we'll work towards getting that when the first site plans come in.
Okay, thank you. And the language that they have, Mr. Judge or Mr. Young, is suitable?
It's acceptable to transportation, and I believe it's acceptable to the planning department as well.
Yep. Thank you very much. So all I'll say about that, Mr. Cyvers and Ms. Schwedler, is that I'm sure that not just myself, but all of us will be exceedingly disappointed if that cross connection is not made. And you'll be working with the other developers to make sure that happens. Okay. All right. Councilmembers, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Reese.
Just briefly, I'm sorry. I wanted to make two additional points, first of all. I want to thank Councilmember Caballero for bringing that issue to the table. She shames us all. It shouldn't take her effort to be asking these questions of developers, and I think I'll personally take it as a lesson to myself to make sure to ask those questions in the future. The second thing, Mr. Mayor, is because you raised the issue about the previous vote, I wanted to say that, in my view, I failed my colleagues that night. That was a vote, I should have explained my no vote in advance of taking it. I think it would have enlightened the conversation. I chose not to do it because I knew that most other, most of our other colleagues were intending to vote on it, vote for the measure, and to be perfectly honest, in retrospect, I think that was probably one of my worst failings of the last term of our council, is my failure to explain that particular vote, and I just wanted to let you know that to you and Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, that that's not going to happen again.
Well, we usually are pretty familiar with you explaining yourself really, really well, Councilmember, so I'm sure it won't happen again.
That's why I said that.
Nevertheless, you have my permission to curse me every time you drive by Barbie Road. I think that'll be something you'll enjoy for the rest of your life.
No doubt, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other comments, Councilmembers, or questions?
Just a question regarding that, the graphic that was shown about the heights, is that the actual grade that the water would flow down towards?
Yes, ma'am. Tim Cyvers, Horvath Associates. Yeah, the green line there is the existing grade from the Barbie Road retail site on the right to the apartment complex on the left, yes.
And so I just want to be really cautious, and, I mean, I'm weighing really heavily on the no side in this conversation because of that, and I don't want to be Charlie in a year, sorry.
Because of the existing grade?
Yeah, well, here's my thing. So I heard from the property manager saying that they don't have any stormwater issues right now, or they don't have heavy rains where they have flooding occurring, and I'm concerned that we would be creating a situation where they would. And I'm not for certain, so I know you heard, I heard you say to the city's requirements, but I know how undercut those city requirements have been in the last two years, and so my concern becomes, how do we make sure that the stormwater and the flooding potentials are alleviated to the maximum, not the minimum?
So the map in front of you is the topographic map, and unfortunately, I can't see the cursor, but the long rectangle there right in the middle is our property area. You can see below that, that blue line, so that's the ditch, if you will, that falls to the southern portion of the apartment complex. That area you can see is not developed because that is the lower area. The picture on your right-hand side proves that very well. This is the two-story apartment buildings that are, the cross-section is through. On the right-hand side, you can see that lower area. So these units as well are built up above to limit the potential.
And so this tree line that's there would stay there?
Yes. This, what you're looking on the right-hand side is a picture from the apartment complex looking towards our site. The cell tower is on the further side from our site, so the area behind these buildings on the picture on the right is where our development will be. So the landscape buffers between the two units will remain.
I need city staff on this. Trying to just, the minimum change that was made in the last, I think it was last year in the legislative session, that reduced our ability to create really healthy stormwater requirements. I want to know that this fits in there comfortably because, I mean, I just don't, I'm not an expert in that area, but I do recognize that there's been some changes that have prevented us from.
So, not 100% sure about which stormwater requirements that you're doing, but the rules that are set in place currently for our stormwater requirements for quantity and quality control would be present for this development.
So quantity and quality, the quantity that they can take in like a heavy downpour, that would be a maximum of?
So typically, the reduction is to the two- and 10-year storms.
Okay.
If there are substantial downstream impediments or flooding that already occurs, which is taken into account in the evaluation of the stormwater impact analysis, those requirements can go up to the 100-year. And that detains basically from post-development to pre-development. So it returns back to the, essentially, the existing water. It captures the water and holds it, so it returns it back to its pre-development condition. It does tend to elongate that path, but it reduces the flow.
So what's the likelihood of that elongation causing flooding down towards the apartments? I don't, they sit up a little bit, but I have seen some flooding in.
Yes, and that is taken into account for that. So they look at that detention, and they look at that holdback time to determine what would minimize any impacts to the downstream properties, and that is standard for all developments.
If I could just address your question in addition. Thank you, Mr. Joyner. I think that's helpful. One thing I wanted to call, or clarify is that this is the existing grade that you're seeing on the screen, and so that will be altered, but you can see that the difference from where our proposed building would be to where the apartments are is probably the most flat area there. And in addition to the water quality and quantity rules that Mr. Joyner went over, which are also the incorporation of the state rules into the code, I don't believe the legislation that is altering that has been passed yet, and we can talk about that, I guess, offline. But the other system of protection that the city has is that these stormwater ponds are inspected on an annual basis by people that are certified to install them, and there's mechanisms in place that if they're failing, the city has an ability to go back and make sure that those repairs are being done in the way that they should be. So if there were to be some sort of flooding event and the stormwater control feature was malfunctioning or something, I do believe the city would have the ability to help make sure that that was said right.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I think that, again, Councilmember Freeman is raising a really important point about our stormwater, and we are concerned about the new state rules. I don't think that we can, I mean, we have to really count on our, our city stormwater folks and the future inspections of these ponds and so forth, because we know we can't always just stop any development that's uphill from other development, and, you know, that we can't have a general rule like that, or, you know, we wouldn't want to have a general rule like that. So, but I appreciate your questions because I think that we all are concerned with stormwater, and we have seen, we have seen what it can be like when it goes bad. And to that end, I just want to suggest to our stormwater folks, and I guess Robert, you're the only one here today, is that at some point, we had a fantastic tour last year of some of our stormwater treatments.
Amazing.
For several councilmembers, and I think Councilmember Reese was on it, and maybe Councilmember Johnson was on it too, I'm not sure, but it was a fantastic tour, and I would suggest you might want to do the same, arrange the apartment, do the same for some of our new members, just a thought.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
I'd love to do it again. It was awesome.
Okay, enough of that, and now we're going to, any more questions by councilmembers? Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, I'm going to declare this matter, this public hearing closed, and the matter is back for the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the change to the future land use map.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution, meaning the future land use map. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Madam Clerk, please.
I'll move we adopt the consistency statement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt the consistency statement and the discussion. If not, Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes 6-1 with Councilmember Freeman voting no.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you all very much for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. Now we're going to move back to, we pulled an item for the general business agenda, which was, I believe, item 16, and Councilmember Middleton.
Hey, Daniel.
Pulled this item, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise this is very quick. Daniel, we had some conversation at the work session around 4B, clause 4B of the agreement, regarding pre-existing duct work to kind of limit tearing up our streets. If we adopt this tonight, what is the mechanism and timetable of determining if those ducts exist, and what's the timetable and mechanism of that, determining those ducts existing and moving forward? I know they don't have to, the owner doesn't have to accept the offer from the developer, but how does that work if we adopt this tonight?
Yeah, hi. Dan Valero from Public Works. Good evening, Council. Right now, our only ability is to reference our, the inventory, data inventory we have available in our GIS systems. So when we get a permit, we would look at that point at what is available, what's nearby in the GIS system. If there are available ducts, we would ask, can they be used? And then we would expect an answer before issuing the permit. If yes, or if no, why not? Why can they not be used? I remember we had the conversation about policing and, you know, I wasn't going to be a policeman, but we don't really have the ability to determine the suitability of an existing duct. That would be a lot of manpower. So we are, historically, we've taken the applicant's word for the reasoning why they can or can't use the existing duct work. And as I understand it, that decision may have already been made by those companies. When they scope a project this big, they do figure out what existing duct work is available, and they determine suitability of each duct and the financial, if it makes sense financially to use that duct works. Those conversations have likely already occurred, but we certainly will become aware of them for each permit application and get an answer at that point.
That makes sense. My sense was, the representative from Spirit at the work session did not seem aware whether or not there was a, maybe he wasn't the right person in the project, but I didn't get the sense that they were aware whether there were pre-existing ducts one way or another, but I appreciate your.
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Someone in the organization is, and we can tackle that on a per-permit basis.
Got you. Thanks so much for your work. That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Thank you, Daniel. All right. Any more discussion of this item?
Just another appreciation. I just want to share that the Spirit Communications was willing to come forward and share their workforce statistics with us, and I had a great conversation with one of their staff members about the diversity that they're working towards as a small business, and I really would appreciate it, they're being forthcoming with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this item. Any more discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please open the vote for item 16? Close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before this body? If not, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 9:04. Thank you.